Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, August 10th, 2022. The time is 2:32 PM. We have a special meeting agenda. This has to do with the airport. I'm officially calling a meeting to order attending our commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Filios. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We have one and only business item, and it's consideration of the luxury international storage lease and a potential action item, which means there's a potential for a vote, but not necessarily one. And so what I'd like to do at this point is open it up and ask our director. Stephen, do you have any comments to make before we proceed?
Your mic.
I believe we've addressed all the comments that legal had. The rest is a board decision on what the business decision of the board wants to do. Walt Fraser is here if you'd like to ask him any specific questions about anything. So I feel it's a fair lease to the county or to the airport in the county, and it's a fair lease to him. And if you would like to make changes, they'll let us know, and we can move forward with that. But at this point, it's a business decision on whether you want to do a percentages or you want to recommend or change something to a straight lease rate.
Okay. Mr. Fraser, would you like to say anything, sir?
No.
Just hit your—here you go. Thank you.
No, I think I've described myself fairly well. So related to the lease, I don't have any current comment unless there's public comment that I can respond to.
Okay. Bill, you're the liaison for the airport. Is there anything you'd like to share?
Well, this has been a problem in some ways because some people want to make it a problem. It's a lease, and I don't think we should hold this person who wants a lease to any different standard than other people who have leases out there. We have Stan Craft Aviation out there. They've got a rather lengthy lease, big lease, and I don't know that we asked them for a business plan or financials or anything else. And I don't think we should really do—should do that to anybody. If they fail in their lease, you know, what happens? Well, what happens if any lessor fails? So, you know, I just don't see—I think we should use the same yardstick for every person on the airport. And I think we may be using a little different yardstick here, and I don't like that.
Okay. Wesley?
If this was an aeronautical lease and there was not revenue sharing involved, I would agree. But it is non-aeronautical. It is 50 years and not 25 with the 25-year renewal and revenue sharing, which means it's more of a partnership. So doing due diligence because of the length and because of the nature of the business, I would have liked a business plan in writing. I would like to see the operating agreement for the LLC. I would like financial documents. I prefer performance bond and skeet language in the lease. But I get these wonderful responses to my questions, which is—which is great. You know, Mr. Fraser's very responsive, and I appreciate that. But I have zero paperwork in my hand showing anything. And I think that if we're going to look at this type of business proposal, then I think some of these things are due diligence, and I would like to see them in paper and not just, you know, in—in words, in lip service. I would like to see these things documented so I can go and point back. I made this decision because I have these documents. Not that I made this decision because it's a nice person, or we've never done this before, or whatever else, you know, excuse there is. I just would like to see these documents in writing, and then I can make a good, informed decision.
Okay. All right. What I'm going to do—I'm going to do something a little bit different. I'm going to open it up for public comment. But let me say this. It's three minutes. It's three minutes strictly. If you don't do it within three, I have to cut you off. Because if I don't do that, we're not going to get through the meeting in one hour's time. So what I'll do is I'll make my comments, and then what I'll do is I'll let you speak before we make any decisions. Normally, we do it the other way around, but in this case, I'm going to let the public go first. So let me make a couple of points here. Point number one, 50 years, not going to cut it. So, Mr. Fraser, please be thinking seriously as we go through this. I don't have—I don't have a problem with an option to renew after 25, but it's got to be 25, not 50. This is me speaking from my perspective. The revenue sharing, not going to work. I want to keep it simple, keep it to a simple lease like any of the others. I did discuss this with Stephen. He thinks we potentially leave money on the table. But I think it's the cleaner approach is to go with a straight lease as opposed to revenue sharing. And the other thing is—and this is something that you would want to weigh heavily—is we've got to remove the Bank of China from the picture. Unless you want to be facing demonstrations, and I can tell you, it's—it's not going to be pretty. And so whether or not it's a good deal, whether they're willing to extend a higher line of credit, I get it. And I understand that certainly our government and even the state of Idaho has relationships with the Chinese government. We export agricultural products, and I do understand that. But I would hate to see us get into a situation where your business operation is impeded because of the level of opposition. So from my perspective, straight lease, 25, not 50 years, and the elimination of the Bank of China. At this point, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open it up for public comment, strictly three minutes. If you can't keep it to three, it's not going to work. So please come forward if you want to speak, right up to the mic, and hit the green button, and it'll pick you up. Go right ahead. Or if you—Doug, you can go right ahead, right where you are. You're fine.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Doug O'Conowitz. I'm a member of the Idaho House of Representatives, and I'm here on behalf of my constituents who—are many of my constituents who aren't happy with the deal. As you all know, and they may not, I've sent you two emails with my concerns about the deal. Chairman Filios has just addressed a couple of them, at least in part for one. And—I appreciate that. So I spoke with Chief Deputy Attorney General Brian Kane today because I was curious about a few of these things. So I'm not going to dwell on the Bank of China. I'm not going to dwell on a lot of the other issues that I've already covered in the email. But I do have three things that didn't sit right with me, so I was lucky, I guess. Or two of them, actually. One of them, I didn't have to be honest. I didn't think of it, but Brian saw it. And he thought deserved some further scrutiny. And so I've asked him in his office to scrutinize these issues. And so the first is a 50-year lease, which he thinks is perhaps longer than he's aware of and is not sure what authority the county might have to do that. Not saying he doesn't have it, but he wanted to look into that in more detail. The second is the—whether or not a deal like this should be open to a competitive bidding process. And that may flow from the leaseholder mortgage status, which creates another potential constitutional issue in his view and wants to look at it a bit more and hear arguments of the contrary from the commission or your counsel relative to Article 12, Section 4, as far as providing aid. A county shall not provide aid. And so if a leasehold mortgage enables someone to more easily finance or mortgage or achieve—to get lending, that—that could constitute aid, perhaps, from the county. So it's glad to hear you're not necessarily thinking of taking action today. I would request respectfully that you—you give me some time to get a response back from the Attorney General's office. I don't think that hurts anyone in this process. And—that—that'll do for me.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. I appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak? Steve, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. My concerns are greatly alleviated by what Commissioner Filios has opened with today. And so I—I don't need to rehash those issues. I—I am concerned about each of the things that you addressed. I'm insulted by Commissioner Brooks and his comment that our public comment is just to make trouble. I—I don't believe that's been the case. I think we've made a—a point on each issue that—that has been an issue with us, and —and I think that was inappropriate for you to do that. This is not a standard lease in spite of what Mr. Kiergert has represented in the paper and continues to represent. It's not—it's not a standard lease from the standpoint of its non-aeronautical property. It was at one time considered for hangar space. It still could be. And it was not put up for—for bid. And I think that—if the county's concern is that they've got dormant property that's costing him $20,000 a year to mow the grass on, that it definitely ought to be put out for a competitive bid. If you want to optimize value, that's what you do. So my final comment is that I'm really concerned that you have an advisory board for the airport here that has been so ineffective with regard to issues like this that they've—they've not done their job, with the exception of Brett Boyer, who I will still point out, read the contract and has tried to be—put in appropriate input to you folks. So again, thank you, Commissioner Filios and Commissioner Duncan. Commissioner Brooks, I wish you'd do your job.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Sandra White, and I'm with the Hayden City Council. And I agree with—I've read all the letters. I've watched all the—the different meetings, and I agree with the letters that I've read from Representative O'Conowitz. And I was just wondering about the business plan as well. I would really like to see a business plan well in place, and I agree that we need further scrutiny on this. And I'm concerned about 20 acres of storage. I would like to know what are some of the requirements of what's allowed to be stored there? Nothing that's dangerous to the community. And I would like to know more about the effects on Hayden. What kind of traffic will it bring? What—what—what will it do to the roads, the infrastructure, and increasing costs to Hayden and the—the needs of the town? So thank you very much for further consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am? Ed, we've got you next.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
First of all, I'd like to tell you my name's Barbara Nelson, and I live in Hayden Lake in Forest Hills. I'd like to thank Bill Brooks and Chris Filios and Leslie Duncan. I voted for all of you and several times. And the reason I'm here is I am a member of the Trap and Ski Club out by the airport, and I find it very important for this club for the simple reason, sir, is that this club dates back to Bing Crosby, to the only country club in the United States that is the oldest. And people shot off there at—at the country club in Corl—I mean, in Hayden Lake there. And then they took the club out by the airport. And that's one of the reasons I'm here, and I also just—I think it's history. And I think it matters because growth is wonderful, but we're erasing everything that's behind us. And that's how we learn to go forward, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm grateful for all the—I'm trying to tell you guys how important you are. You—maybe you don't have any idea how important you are to us. Everything you do affects everybody in this room. And I love you for a lot of your decisions, and I don't like some of your decisions. But I am going to tell you that this facility, this luxury, whatever it is, they're going to have a pool out there for the name luxury, storage units. I think—I agree with Leslie that there should be some more information before you two make your decision. I've come across that I think you and Chris have already made your mind up. But I'm here because I disagree with it. And anything that's from the Bank of China, please think big time to find out more and and have him get a loan somewhere else, because I've already lived through Long Beach Harbor that was leased for four years through Clinton to the Red Chinese Army Hutchinson Incorporated under that name. And then it was sold to them for—for—sold to them after the four years. So that's why you'll see a China flag in Long Beach Harbor, and that's what our problem—nobody even knows about this. And then I called your governor back up here in 1997, and the Red Chinese Army was practicing from Sandpoint through our mountains here. Does anybody know that? It's in the Wall Street Journal. It's in the papers—the Washington Times in 1997. If I ran over, I apologize. But I just don't believe, sirs and and Leslie, ma'am, that anything connected—I don't care what's going on in Boise. We're Cootenay County. That's what I care about.
Thank you.
Because we have to start here.
Appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you for—you—thanks for listening to me.
You're very welcome. Ed?
Commissioners? Well, thanks for having a hearing, even though it wasn't particularly well-published today. I was—got onto this issue when I read about it in the paper. I own one of the largest storage facilities about one block south of this property. I would love the opportunity to submit a proposal and try to lease some of the airport property. After I heard about this proposal, I contacted the airport director, and I said, "I'm interested in leasing five acres just south of this on the corner of Miles and Ramsey." Airport director sent me an email—email back saying, "I'm already working with somebody else on that property. It's not available." So then I did some more research, and I found out that there was another parcel between the corner parcel and the 20 acres Mr. Fraser was interested in. And I sent him an email, and I said, "I'm interested in leasing that parcel." And he sent me back an email saying, "I'm working with somebody else. We're—we're in negotiations on that. That's not available." So I sent him an email two days ago saying, "Well, how about this corner up on Ramsey in Wyoming? I'm interested in submitting a proposal and leasing that." He hasn't replied back to me. I also sent him a request, went over to his office and made a records request, which he hasn't replied to, but your communications director replied to and gave me a copy of the lease. So I find this entire process lacking in public notice, fair opportunity to bid and Myself, as well as perhaps other people in the community, would be interested in leasing some of these lands if you went through what's called an RFP or a Public Request for Proposals. As the largest storage owner in close proximity who will be most impacted by this, I want an opportunity and a level playing field, and I hope that you back up in this and take a look at it. And for the benefit of your legal counsel and following up on Doug's comments in talking to Brian Kane and my decades of interaction with the land board, their—the AG's conclusion is that a—a long-term lease is the sale of an interest in the property, not the whole interest in the property, but a sale of the interest in the property. And that's got to go through a due process, if not a competitive bidding process. So I would encourage you to—to back up, require more input, and have a—a fairer process that involves and gives the opportunity to businesspeople in the—in the county, in the city of Hayden, and in the community to compete on some of these non-aeronautical leases. And I understand, Commissioner Brooks, your comments about the existing aeronautical lease structure, but wish to emphasize that the land along Ramsey Road is not aeronautical property and is not being leased for that purpose. And if any of the commissioners have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Appreciate it. Anyone else, sir?
Needs to go to Green.
There you go. Name, please.
So he didn't turn it off. So I'm Steve Thurman, and I'm just a member of the Carling, Skeet, and Trap Club, but I'm also have been a resident of Cootenay County since 1995. So my wife was born here. Her roots go back to 1880. So she's got deep roots in this area. So my concern was—a part of my concern—Ed, you did a great job because you have a business. I have a business in Cootenay County since 1995, employed up to 125 employees. So I've been around a bit with this area. And if Cootenay County, a government agency, was going to go into business partnership with a for-profit company, I've got a lot of flags that go off. There's conflict of interest. How can the county go in partnership with a for-profit entity competing with other for-profit entities? It just doesn't sound right. And especially, you know, I've been here before, and I presented in—Mr. Kiergert, when we were talking last—oh, my gosh, last April, you know, a year ago, year and a half ago, about our lease, because our lease is coming up the end of April, April 11th of next year. And FMB, fair market value, that was the mantra coming out of this gentleman's mouth for a long time to justify all of the non-aeronautical people and aeronautical people, their leases going up, you know, 300%. Well, ours went up over 2,000%, but going up over 300% because of fair market value, trying to get that property back to fair market value. And then when I read and saw the lease agreement that was there and how it was so much under ours, five cents a square foot, our lease out of the first year is $120,000 a year. Yours was a lot less than that. And we're a nonprofit. We're a nonprofit organization. And to have the county to consider that and to not look at the conflict there in all of this just baffles me. It really—it doesn't make sense. It's a one plus one equals three, especially because of all the emphasis with FMB. Get all this up and then to out of the blocks, a for-profit company and no business plan to forecast revenue to—to try to determine what the actual return would be for the county? You know, it just doesn't make sense to me. It seems like a huge conflict. And, you know, I'm a citizen of Cootenay County. You have stewardship over the funds of Cootenay County and operating. And to start contemplating, thinking, going into business with a for-profit company that's not proven, you know, no letters from the bank, no business plan? If you individually wouldn't go into business, go into this agreement with this gentleman over here without a business plan with forecasted revenue, you wouldn't consider that. So for the county to consider that and to endorse that, it just—it baffles me. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Jonathan? Nothing? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Any thoughts? Leslie, Bill?
I mean, I'm fine going back to the drawing board. I have posed that question before if we wanted to open it up for Request for Proposal. And I think it's a kind of a cart and the horse issue, or the chicken and the egg issue, or whatever. I mean, you don't know you have something that people want until somebody says, "I want it." And then when you have everybody else say, "Well, I want that too," then as a county, do we just say, "First come, first served"? Do we say, "Well, let's open it up to make sure that the taxpayers are getting the best value for a long-term lease in this area"? So I think I would be fine with putting that out for a Request for Proposal at this point. I—I don't know. I mean, I'd—I'd look at other terms of the lease, but once again, the lease as it's written, I would like a business plan. I would like operating agreement, financials. We just haven't, I don't think, been provided enough hard documentation to enter into this type of business.
Stephen, do you want to respond to anything?
To be honest, Commissioners, at this point, I think it's just—my recommendation is just vote on it as is, and if it's a no, we'll either go back to the drawing board and deal with it that way. Or if there's corrections you want to make as a board, make those corrections. But I don't want to continue to waste Mr. Fraser's time if it's going to be a no.
That's true.
Yep.
We've already spent a significant amount of staff time on this. We—he's spent a significant amount of time as well and money. I would rather we either be done with it and move forward, or we just—we approve it and move forward. Whatever that looks like, it's up to you. So.
Good. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Fraser.
It appears clearly I'm the bad guy here. I don't like being the bad guy. I'd just like to point out a few things, and hopefully it will help some of the folks that are here better understand. Regarding the Skeet Club, I have no issue with that. I'd actually like to be a member. I mean, that—that—that's fine with me. I—I don't know why there's an issue between myself and that organization. I—I don't understand, unless it's been precipitated in some way. In regard to the Bank of China, I think I tried to point out clearly my position. I don't know how well-read these folks are on it, but I've—back in the 1990s, if I could have a few moments to respond to this, back in the 1990s, myself and a few partners that are probably well-known to the aviation community brought general aviation to the People's Republic of China. As a result of that, it caused close associations. My organization had a joint venture with the central government for 10 years. If anybody wants to know anything about China, I'd be happy to—to talk to them anytime they wish. I don't think there's anybody in this room that knows any more about China than I do, frankly. I have no affiliations there directly related to this deal at all. I simply requested a letter through the bank because I have a long association with them. It's very difficult, as I explained, to get this letter here domestically because people don't want to issue it for whatever reason. When I say people, I'm talking about banks. I understand there's a—there's issues with China today. I have some myself. This particular project for me is sort of a—a happy project. It's not one of the projects I spend a whole lot of time on. I was supposed to be somewhere else in the world today. I'm here, and when we talk about cost, I look at this costing me in the area of— I'm here, and when we talk about cost, I look at this costing me in the area of $34,000 to $38,000 so far in business, to sit here and attend these meetings, which I wholly want to, because this project is very important to me. As far as investment in this, this is a simple, we're going to construct some storage units. This gentleman that just spoke, I understand he has a storage facility. I'd love to spend some time talking with him, maybe there's something we could do together. There's all sorts of opportunities. My take, the way I look at this, is I have several groups of investors that I work with here in Northern Idaho. They're friends, they're prominent people, those are the people that I have spoken to about investment here, and I think they'd be happy to cooperate. The intent is to build something that would be, that would make the county proud, make myself proud. If it's competitive, it's competitive. I don't know what to say about that. I think I've given Stephen some thoughts on how to eliminate those percentages and look at this entirely differently. I'm certainly willing to do that, and I'm not sitting here because I'm the guy that wants to make millions of dollars out of this. I think probably, at least the commissioners are aware of my intent. So with that thought in mind, if there's anybody in this room that would like to ask me questions directly, I'd be happy to address those directly.
Okay.
Pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you. Bill, did you want to weigh in?
Not really. I pretty much said what I have to say.
Can you give that list to the commissioners?
I'm sorry?
Hold on, ma'am. Ma'am, we have to maintain a certain amount of order here, so you can talk afterwards if you wish. What I would suggest we do as a board is because the, by the way, Representative Akonowitz referred to Brian Kane. Brian Kane is an Assistant Attorney General in the AG's office. So, and in fact, I've had some dealings with him in the past, but what I would suggest is let's wait on his opinion, and then we go from there. There are a number of issues that have been brought up, competitive bidding, that's a potential question, obviously the issue of China, and I won't repeat what I said early on. What I would suggest we do is let's wait for that opinion, which I imagine isn't going to take terribly long, and then we decide what we do from there. What I'd like to see us do is basically take the same model that we used when we negotiated for the sale, for the purchase, rather, of the old Cooney Electric, which is up on Dakota, which we've owned now for, is it almost two years that we've owned it? And we do to occupy in hopefully the late fall of 2023. And one of us was designated to negotiate that, that was me, under the direction of obviously the three of us, and I think we need to do the same thing here. We've got too many players involved in this. So what I would suggest is, Bill, you're the liaison, let's wait on the opinion from Assistant Attorney General or Deputy Attorney General Brian Kane, and then you get together with Stephen, Mr. Fraser, and decide, you know, what the next step should be. Maybe we need to go out for competitive bids. I don't know that we need to do that, maybe that's the best approach, but let's take one step at a time, let's wait for the opinion first. But I'll do, see, we still have some time, so I'll entertain some questions. You guys okay with that as a first step?
Sure.
Phil?
Yes.
Leslie?
Sure.
Okay. Ed, go right ahead, sir.
Do you want me to speak from here?
Whatever's easiest, as long as you can get to a mic.
I can get here pretty quick.
Okay.
You've got other lands out there, and I haven't been able to get anything other than, "I'm working with somebody else" response from your airport director.
Okay.
So you need to open up this process so that it's transparent and it's fair. And who your director is dealing with, through what procedure, at what prices, need to be laid out on the table. Other members of the community, both the public and businesspeople, need to have a fair opportunity here. And I don't know how this process got so far down the line without public knowledge and public exposure and a fair opportunity to compete, but that's critical for me. Thank you.
Well, taken. Stephen, a question for you, I think you indicated to me earlier, did we ever, refresh my memory, did we ever try to market this property?
In the past, I've marketed, I've done some mockups of it, but nothing significant.
We never had it listed?
Never had it listed. We've never done it, hired a realist or realtor to do anything like that. But it's also been vacant for 80 years. And it has never been listed as aeronautical, this area that is, we're discussing the 20 acres, far as I can find from any master plan we've ever seen, has never been shown as an aeronautical property.
Okay.
The gun club sits, has been shown as aeronautical property.
Okay.
And it stopped before it got to this area.
Okay.
This area was always shown as some, never, it was never shown as an aeronautical use, was always just undeveloped property, non-aeronautical property. To respond to Ed's comments, we've done, and the way we've done it is whoever comes to us and requests area and submits the application process is how we do it. This is no different than how we operate for the leases on the, other leases on the airport. If they're requesting, we don't have, because of the buffer zone that we're providing to the gun club, we provide, we don't have that much more property in that area. In fact, I answered Ed's email already, before I came here, the other property he's requesting is listed as aeronautical property on the ALP, so it has to be aeronautical use. It does, and it's actually where Parks and Rec is going to be doing their dirt bike area.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Okay. As to the question of competitive bidding, I think you might have already answered it.
We've never, we've never completed competitive bidding, we've never had a requirement to, we don't identify it in our minimum standards, state law, that I, every state law that I've read never listed as a requirement. It listed as you can, but it never listed as a requirement.
And to my point earlier, I mean, if we didn't know what we had, like if you've got this old junker in your backyard, and somebody says, "Hey, I'll give you 50 bucks worth," and all of a sudden, all the neighbors come alive and say, "Well, if that's for sale, I'll give you 100, or I'll give you 200." You know, not knowing what we have, maybe we want to go out to bid, so just a, just a thought.
Okay. Anything else you want to add, Stephen?
Nope.
Mr. Fraser, anything you'd like to add, sir?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to reiterate once more relative to the Bank of China. The Bank of China is the fourth-largest bank in the world. The first three largest banks in the world are also in China. The fifth-largest bank in the world is JP Morgan Chase, who I had long affiliation with, including the chairman of JP Morgan Chase. Unfortunately, I don't have a document from them, which I wish I did. I almost wish we would have just represented self-funding here. So I'd like to just reassure anybody that's in this room, or publicly reassure, we have no intention of financing anything with any bank in China now or ever.
Fair enough. Okay. So why don't we do this, let's wait on the opinion from the Assistant Attorney General, Brian Kane. Representative Akonowitz, Doug, you get the final word, sir. Go ahead. Anything?
Thanks for your time. I think that's the right, the right step to take.
Okay.
Let's get our brains wrapped around this. I did have one quick question, if you don't mind. How many other deals does the airport have that are revenue sharing, if any?
I don't know that we do. Stephen, you want to confirm that?
At this time, none. There's been a couple other proposals floated that are other revenue sharing.
It strikes me that's one of the big catchpoints here, so I imagine that isn't lost on you all either.
And that's a good point, because if we go with, if we go with a straight lease, then technically, there's no difference between that and a hangar lease, you know? So I think there's something to be said about, why would we hold this individual, Mr. Fraser, to a higher standard than we would for a hangar lease if it is not revenue sharing, if it's a straight lease? So that's something that has to be bear in mind, so that we're not providing disparate treatment. But then on the other hand, why wasn't it open for bid? And that's a whole nother question. But I think, before we go any further, let's get the opinion from the, from Brian Kane, and then we'll go from there. Bill, you are the liaison, so it might behoove you to get together when we get that opinion with Mr. Fraser and Stephen, and let's see where we go from there. It might mean that we do have to go out for competitive bid, I don't know, but we can handle it at that time. We'll take one step at a time. And at that, at this point, I've got 3:14, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.